Adjustment Regular Meeting of October 7th, 2020. Will Secretary Schultz, first I call this meeting to order. Now will Secretary Schultz please call the role? I believe you're muted. Secretary Schultz.
It looks like he's frozen.
He's frozen, he's worse than muted.
Can you, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, Graham, very good.
Okay, my video may be frozen, but I am, I am on my phone as well. Board Member Bartlett, here. Board Member Cohn.
Here.
Board Member Heald.
Here.
Board Member Kentner.
Here.
Board Member Miller.
Here.
Board Member Peters.
Here.
Board Member Stone.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Secretary Schultz. So before we go to item three on the agenda, I'd like to ask Bill Tuthill if he can give us an update on the, any progression with regard to the White Fence Farm litigation.
I'm happy to do so, Mr. Chairman. There is a draft settlement agreement that has been circulated among the council and some of the parties in this case. The most current draft that I have is dated from about a week and a half ago. I don't believe it is the most current iteration of that draft. And during our executive session, I will explain, assuming we have an executive session, I will explain why. I am under the impression that the parties would like to submit that draft settlement agreement to city council at, I believe, and perhaps Mr. Cox or Mr. Rice can shed some light on it. I'm thinking at their meeting next week to discuss it. But at this juncture, the substantive issues have, for the most part, been agreed upon, subject to the approval of various parties. And part of what I would like to have a discussion about in our executive session tonight is what role the Board of Adjustment may or may not play with regard to the the settlement agreement. So the good news is there's been a tremendous amount of progress that it's close to being finalized. I did have conversations today with Carolyn White, who is one of the attorneys representing the developer. I had a discussion with Pat Wilson, who is representing the city, and Mr. Parker. And I have had some email communications in the last few days with various entities. I hope that I had technical difficulties today, I apologize for it. But I hope that eventually all of you did receive a draft version of that settlement agreement. It may have only been in the last couple of hours. But hopefully you've got something in front of you that you'll be able to take a look at if you want to during our discussion. So that's my update, Mr. Heald.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Tuthill, appreciate that. Secretary Schultz, will you read item three into the record, please?
Item three. Request for executive session pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 24-6-402 (4B) for the purpose of conferring with an attorney to receive legal advice.
Very good, thank you, sir. So at this point, I will open this request for executive session to board member discussion. Do we have any discussion? If so, please raise your hand electronically.
Don't we have to make a motion for this first?
Well, I, I guess I do need to make a motion first, I'm getting, jumping ahead here. I'll call for a motion, do we have a motion to enter executive session?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay, I was gonna say, I was looking for electronic hand, thank you, Mr. Miller. Board Member Miller, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Board Member Miller and a second by Board Member Cohn. Now, I will open it to board member discussion. Is there any discussion? Please raise your hand electronically. And if there is none, I will.
I would like to at least intervene and indicate that pursuant to the statute, you need to identify the particular purpose, topic of discussion. And it would be my impression that the purpose of an executive session to receive legal advice and counsel from me would be related to the White Fence Farms redevelopment application. And so I would like the record to be clear that that's the purpose that we are going to have a request for an executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Tuthill. Dale, are you willing to revise your motion to clarify?
Yes, I will to request for executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 (4B) for the purpose of conferring with an attorney to receive legal advice regarding the White Fence Farm negotiations and situation.
And I, that's okay with the second.
Okay, very good, so we have a motion in the second. Now I will entertain discussion, if anyone would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And if I don't see hands, I will call for Secretary Schultz to take the vote to go into executive session by roll call vote. Seeing no hands, I will ask Secretary Schultz to take the vote.
Board Member Bartlett?
Aye.
Board Member Cohn?
Aye.
Board Member Heald?
Aye.
Board Member Kentner?
Aye.
Board Member Miller?
Aye.
Board Member Peters?
Aye.
Board Member Stone?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you, Secretary Schultz. So we would look for the chat room next, I believe. Here we go, the breakout room, so we will suspend this item on the agenda at this point and convene the executive session.
Hello, Tim. How you doing?
I'll let you know. Yeah, I'm looking to see if I was muted before I said anything. I guess no news is good news, right?
Give him a thumbs up or a thumbs down or some sideways.
Who?
Hello, Paul.
I don't think Caesar had a thumb sideways, did he? Trying to hit the riot on the next chariot.
And here comes bachelor number one. No, it's just Bill.
Okay, I just got a text that we're unmuted, folks. So you might want to mute yourself until we begin. Yes, we do. So we will reconvene the regular meeting of the Lakewood Board of Adjustment at 8:51 PM. Will the clerk please read item four on the agenda?
Thank you for your patience. Item four, discussion of the board's options with regard to the litigation against the board regarding the White Fence Farm redevelopment.
Thank you, Secretary Schultz. So at this point, I will entertain a motion with regard to the board's option. Do we have a motion?
Well, do we have an item five? Do I have to make a motion on item five?
Well, actually, that'll come later. We're still on item four regarding the board's options. I think we need to make a decision with regard to what our next step is. So is there a motion with regard to continuing the meeting?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to continue the Board of Adjustment meeting to a date certain of Wednesday, November 4th.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? I will second that. Dale seconded it. So Board Member Miller as well has seconded that. We have a motion and... Thank you, Johan. Do we have everybody? Yes, we do. So we will reconvene the regular meeting of the Lakewood Board of Adjustment at 8:51 PM. Will the clerk please read item four on the agenda?
Thank you for your patience. Item four, discussion of the board's options with regard to the litigation against the board regarding the White Fence Farm redevelopment.
Thank you, Secretary Schultz. So at this point, I will entertain a motion with regard to the board's option. Do we have a motion?
Um, well, do we have an item five? Do I have to make a motion on item five?
Well, actually, that'll come later. We're still on item four regarding the board's options. I think we need to make a decision with regard to what our next step is. So is there a motion with regard to continuing the meeting?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to continue the Board of Adjustment meeting to a date certain of Wednesday, November 4th.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? I will second that. Dale seconded it. So Board Member Miller as well has seconded that. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I do not see any hands, so let's take a vote using your electronic raise hand. Kathy, would you read your motion one more time? To continue.
The motion is to continue the Board of Adjustment meeting to a date certain of Wednesday, November 4th.
Very good. Thank you, Secretary Schultz. Will you take the vote by roll call, please?
Board Member Bartlett?
Aye.
Board Member Cone?
Aye.
Board Member Heald?
Aye.
Board Member Kentner?
Aye.
Board Member Miller?
Aye.
Board Member Peters?
Aye.
Board Member Stone?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Secretary Schultz. So at this point, I'd like to ask Paul and anybody with regard to staff, Aaron, does that date work for staff? Thumbs up from Paul. Aaron, you good with that? Okay, then I let the record reflect that we will continue this meeting on November 4th. And that concludes item number four. So Secretary Schultz, will you please read item five on the agenda?
Item five, approval of minutes of the August 5th, 2020 Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting.
Very good. Thank you. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes. Actually, we do this by consensus, I guess, don't we? We've done it both ways. I see Dale nodding. I say let's do it by consensus, but I'd like to open with a request for an edit. And then certainly entertain any others if there are any others. My edit is on, I believe, the last page, page five, the second paragraph. There was a, you read what's in there now. The last sentence of the second paragraph where it's restating a position that I took, said that I stated, he stated his desire to postpone the minutes until the following meeting. And I'd just like to maybe clean that up a little bit and restate it, you know, to say that he stated his decision as chairman to postpone the approval of the minutes of the Board of Adjustment meetings of January 15th and January 22nd, 2020, until the Board of Adjustment meeting held on August 19th, 2020. Just kind of a little clarification there that it wasn't a request, it was a decision that I made as chairman. So if everybody's okay with that, I guess give me a thumbs up. Aggressive Dale nodding. Looks good. Okay, are there any other edits or corrections to the minutes? Aaron, I see a hand up.
Do I have a hand up?
Yeah, it's electronically, but maybe it's not intended. That's no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Not intended.
No worries. So we'll be a little less formal in this, and I'll just call for a show of hands to approve the minutes as amended. Very good. That's unanimous. So I believe that concludes item number five on the agenda. So Secretary Schultz, will you read item six?
Item six, general business.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any items of general business that people would like to raise? If so, please raise your hand electronically. Okay, seeing no hands, I will close item number six, general business. And with that, we are adjourned at 8:57 PM. And we will move into the next item of business tonight, which would be the study session for the Planning Commission with regard to rules and regulations. So give me a second to change my paperwork. Then I will ask Mr. Schultz to, I'll formally convene the meeting and ask Mr. Schultz for your next steps. All right, here we go. So it is October 7th at 8:58 PM, and I convened this study session of the Lakewood Planning Commission. Since it is a study session, it's less formal, and as we all know, and I want the public to understand that, we will not, you know, follow the usual formality. I'll just read item A on the study session agenda, which is Planning Commission Rules and Regulations. This is a continuation of our previous meeting on this, which has now been quite some time ago. I wanted to open by asking Dale, Commissioner Miller, if he is okay with us continuing the discussion where we left off, with the understanding that we all know Dale was unable to attend that last meeting due to an emergency. My thought is that we are going to produce a red line, and then we could incorporate your comments at the time we work through the red line. But if you're not comfortable with that, if you have comments you'd like to make or suggestions with regard to, I think we got through 3.7, let me know with how you want to do that tonight, Dale.
I should have asked you earlier about the, I know there's not minutes, and so that's, I'm fine with just looking at the red line, I think, because we'll have it. That'll be the official discussion anyway. This is just a study session.
Okay, good. I was hoping that you would feel that way, because, you know, we don't want to fail in any way to get your input on this. But I think that is a process where you'll have a complete document, and you can also go back and watch the tape. That way, when we do the red line, you'll have the opportunity to contribute on all those other places.
Since this is not a public meeting or quasi judicial meeting, I may just have to talk with you informally about it, too.
Okay, we can always do that. All right, well, very good. Then my notes show that we were at 3.7 when we, when we last worked on this. If anybody sees that differently, please speak up. Trying to get to my notes here. And the last thing that that I had, I think, was with regard to 3.7. Teresa, I know you had a comment on 3.9, but before we get to that, everybody clear that we completed 3.7? I see Kathy's got a hand up.
Thank you. I thought, isn't that where we left off?
Yeah, that's kind of where my notes show. I just want to be sure everybody's agreeing with me that we can move on.
Well, I had a question on 3.7, though.
Okay, go for it.
At the end, it says that the commission that we may review and make recommendations on request for vacations, easements, or I'm sorry, I does it? Is it only at the Director of Community Planning and Development? Is it the same as at the beginning, is what I was looking at? Yes, it is. I'm sorry, it's fine.
Okay, so.
I was just wondering if, so, okay, I guess I am going to bring it up. I'm sorry. How is that decision made? Because there have been a lot of proposals for vacations, and I don't know that of one that has come before planning permission. So how is that decision made?
That's a good question. I kind of had, I kind of had the same one. So Paul, can you help us out there?
I think, Doc, isn't it the case that vacations of roads that are not built don't have to go to the Planning Commission? I mean, I think it's that simple, isn't it?
Well, none of them do. According to this, it's at the sole discretion of the Director of Community Planning and Development, which is sort of interesting, because we don't exactly have that title anymore. I'm not sure.
Right. And so the, what comes to the Planning Commission would typically involve a larger case. As Commissioner Miller stated, if we've got a piece of property and someone is looking to vacating it, staff looks at it. Is it, is it a road that's currently used? Is it a road that's going to be expanded? Is there a need for the property? And so if not, in vacating rights of way, typically, that's a council decision. So the Director of Planning would bring a right-of-way vacation to the, to the Planning Commission. If it were involved in a larger case, you're actually, you're doing several hundred acres of land, and you're actually plotting right-of-ways, or you're looking to move something. You're rezoning property and/or right-of-way. So anything where the, there's kind of a secondary action, those type of right-of-way vacations would be brought to the Planning Commission. Typically, go ahead, Kathy, or Commissioner Kentner.
Well, it's just, you know, I've been, you know, I know a lot of them have gone to, can you think of any, is this a necessary part of this? Can you think of anything in the last 10 years that's actually come to Planning Commission in this kind of a sense?
I cannot. Yeah, I'm going back as I'm talking, trying to give you an example, and I don't have a good example. I know, I don't know if this is going to counsel yet. There is one in the Rooney Valley where they're looking at putting in a roundabout. And it's, it's literally a matter of kind of modifying the intersection a few feet one way or the other. And that doesn't rise to the occasion where it would need a planning recommendation to city council. So I cannot give you an example in the past 15 years that we've taken something to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. That's exactly what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, are you complete there, Kathy? Johan, you had a hand up?
Yes, thank you. I think that answers my question, too, because, you know, I've noticed a number of, and I think I may have talked about this last time, a number of vacations have gone to city council, and, you know, we haven't looked at them at all. And I think it's only when they need a recommendation from us, for some reason, that we would take any action on it. Because council has to, has the final say anyway. Am I correct on that?
Yes, you are correct, Commissioner Coe.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Johan. Well, I had a kind of a, I appreciate Kathy's question, because I kind of had a similar feeling about it. And I guess my question is, do you see any way to clarify how, how the process would be viewed or be, you know, looked at by the Planning Commission versus other entities? I mean, I realize the current lead-in pretty much covers it, because it says in accordance with state law and/or subdivision ordinance. So as those things changes, those things change over time, maybe our role is different over time. But is there any way to clarify this, or do you think we should just leave it as is?
Right. And when we were talking about going back to notes, what I had was a follow-up discussion with Mr. Cox and see how we might tweak that language. So that was, I think this point might have been brought up at the very end. I was looking to get some further input on clarification of when this may or may not apply. So that's a to-do item on my list from notes from last time.
Okay, well, that's good. If you could, you know, maybe incorporate into the red line or bring them into a future meeting if there are some, some points of, or things that, you know, Tim thinks can be done and you agree with. Thanks for pursuing some, some way to clean this up a little. Any other comments? Johan, I see a hand up.
I was, I didn't take my hand down, but.
Oh, okay, I thought it.
There is a need, there may be a need. I thought of where a need might be arising where they would, where staff would want to bring it to Planning Commission beforehand, because sooner or later, we might get a high-profile vacation. Somebody who wants to close a street, and local people may not want the closure, for example. That's one thing. It may be very uncommon, but it's something that could occur. And maybe has occurred in the past and hasn't occurred anytime recently.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no more hands with regard to 3.7, let's move on to 3.8, which is appeals. Are there any comments, questions, hands raised? I have some that I would certainly like to bring up. I got a little confused in looking at this with regard to how the responsibilities of the Planning Commission relate to the Board of Appeals and how appeals are handled, who has responsibility for appeals under the charter. And I think I'm still confused, because it basically, if you look at the duties of the Planning Commission in the Charter, appeals is not one of them. But if you look in the zoning ordinance, there are specific places where an appeal is heard by the Planning Commission. So you know, I guess it, I'm just not quite sure if we need to provide some cleanup on this. One suggestion I'd like to make is that if we, if we are all comfortable that the commission, here is appeals on the three items, I guess, that are listed there. Denial of a final site plan, approval or denial of a preliminary map, and approval or denial of a final plat. I would question, where does our authority come from to hear those? If it doesn't come from the Charter, well, it does come from zoning ordinance. That's clear, that it comes from the zoning ordinance. But what that means is the zoning ordinance does not agree with the Charter in terms of what the commission's role is with regard to appeals. Dale, good. Maybe you can provide some input here. What do you think?
I'm just going by memory, but I believe that what the Charter says is that there, it also, of course, we sit as a Board of Adjustment, not the Board of Appeal. And it does specify a Board of Appeal, but I believe it also says that if no Board of Appeal is appointed, that the, that the Planning Commission or Board would hear those appeals.
Okay, well, I need to look into that unless somebody has the language handy. Thank you, Dale. That may explain how the role of appeals showed up in the zoning ordinance for Planning Commission. I wasn't worried. Paul, do you have some input there, too?
Commissioner Heald, and, and I think what you're, you're not seeing, I don't have the zoning ordinance right in front of me to read from, the, the appeal of a site plan. So the site plan is approved by the planning director, right? And a preliminary map and a final plat, if they're not approved by the Planning Commission, i.e. over 10, goes to the Planning Commission for approval. The planning director approves those. So the appeals are if Travis were to deny a site plan, then the applicant for the site plan could come to the, that could appeal the director's decision. And the only place to take that is to the Planning Commission. So then the Planning Commission would look to see if the director followed and implemented the conference of plan, the zoning ordinance, and the subdivision ordinance. And if he did so, you would support his decision. If he didn't, or you found a finding that differed from the director, you could, you could overrule his decision. So what you're not seeing under appeals, it's appeal of a director's decision for those three items. And then they come to the Planning Commission, not the Board of Adjustment. And I can, I don't have, like I said, I don't have my zoning ordinance. If you want, as we move forward with the discussion, I can go online and pull that up.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. I mean, that, that's really sort of fills in some gaps for me. Let's see, Dale, did you still have a hand up, or? Okay, Kathy, I believe you're next then. Thank you, Paul.
Yep, Paul, thank you. That's what I was, and I did pull up the zoning ordinance right before you started talking, and it says, you know, not only would we hear an appeal from the denial of a final site plan, but somebody could appeal. but somebody could appeal the approval of a final site plan. So the things listed right now, the planning commission, that appeals go to planning commission is minor waiver, minor waiver, site plan, comprehensive site plan and zoning lot. And zoning lot, I think, is new of, as of the 2012 zoning ordinance. I don't think it was actually even in the one before that. So I was kind of wondering if it would be better to clarify the language in the appeals section of saying, is something like including but not limited to these things? Or that we hear appeals as provided for in the zoning ordinance, something like that? If that would clarify it?
I like that reference.
Yeah, I think so. I agree.
Yeah, because I think if the zoning ordinance is modified, then we're still in track, tracking the, the process there. Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Any other comments on Kathy's suggestion?
Just so I'm understanding, I'm, I'm looking at, I think, the same table Kathy might have been reading from in the zoning ordinance, it's table 1721. It says that the planning commission has appeal authority for comprehensive sign plan, but I think it means site plan. Is that correct, or does it mean sign plan?
It, it, it does mean sign plan.
Okay.
One of the provisions was, we had, we had larger developments that were coming in as, as kind of a campus or, or something on the scale of a Belmar or a Denver West, and they wanted to write sign standards specific to those sites. So we have a, a provision for a comprehensive sign plan, and we've, we provide some guidance. We've only had one, and I think it was for, oh shoot, it's over All-Star Park, the big nonprofit facility over there, it's skipping my mind right now.
Alameda and Harlan, is that right?
Alameda and Harlan, correct.
Yeah, thanks for the memory jog. I, I remember that. Thanks, appreciate it.
All right, thanks Alex for, for, and Kathy for talking about that table 1721, because that's one of the areas where I was feeling a bit confused about when, you know, the charter didn't talk about us hearing appeals, although Dale may have cleared that up. So thank you guys for bringing that detail in. Is there any more discussion or suggestions on 3.8? Okay, I don't see any, any movement there. Johan, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, I don't want to be scattergunning the charter right now, but on, if you look at Article 4 of the Charter, 4.5 Boards and Commissions, if there is a broad grant of power that all city boards and commissions, let's see, except as otherwise provided in the charter, city council may, as it deems necessary or desirable, establish, alter, consolidate or abolish boards and commission by ordinance. Well, obviously, you can't abolish the zoning, or rather, the planning commission, because it's specifically provided for, same thing with the Board of Adjustment. But other than that, it can assign duties to different commissions, and I don't see any prohibition on that in terms of assigning some additional duties to the planning commission, rather than having to create a whole new commission. I, that, at least that's my take on it right now. So I might think a little bit about that. So that if it, you know, like through the zoning ordinance, if it gives appeals powers, that's at least within the purview of what a planning commission might do or a Board of Adjustment.
Thank you Johan, that's very interesting. Paul, is that, you know, your take on it, that the zoning ordinance being an ordinance empowers the planning commission to hear appeals absent, you know, a specific circumstance like Dale pointed out? So it's already, essentially, that's where it comes from then.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you guys for educating me. I, I just couldn't find it, so thank you very much. Any additional comments, questions on 3.8? Nope. Okay, I think Johan, that was the hand that was last up, so, let's see, with regard to appeals, in the past, the last paragraph, I wanted to make one more comment. The first sentence of the current language says, "Commission may approve, deny, or conditionally approve any appeal." And, you know, with the, all of the work that we've done on the White Fins Farm case, we certainly are all well acquainted with what a decision requires, a majority vote. So should we add at the end of that sentence, "Approve any appeal by majority vote"?
I don't, I want to, I have to interject. I don't think, I don't, I absolutely don't agree that it has to be by majority vote. I think it has to be by, I mean, implying that there has to be an odd number of people or that there's a, a clear majority. I don't think that that's, I don't think that's, that, I know I haven't agreed to that as, as I, I, I still go by what Mistress Tudhill said from the very beginning, went through, advised us on this while we were still way back when. And that's that a, that a tie vote means that it didn't pass, which means, you know, it, that's, and people can disagree with that. And maybe what we should do then, if we want to, is go further, but, and have our city attorney give us an opinion about this. But I don't think we should act independently of the city attorney or of what is, as Mr. Tudhill described, kind of prevailing procedure, protocol, law. He gave us a number of case examples too, that, that showed that that was, or that demonstrated that that was the, the case. I, I wouldn't be at all in favor of making a wholesale change here in our procedures that could actually have broad and wide effect. I, I think that's not appropriate. That's, we, we definitely need to have that minimum Mr. Cox in on this conversation, and perhaps other people too. There isn't, that's just, I, I don't even, I, I don't, I had never seen any board with authority to make decisions that required, and, you know, or would disallow a vote, because if there wasn't a majority, I've never seen that. It, I mean, it just, and, and I would, what I would say is someone, perhaps our attorneys would do this, but someone needs to produce an example of when this does occur. Our, our attorney gave us some examples of when, you know, of, of, of what, how courts perceived those, and they were always, it was always to say that they, essentially, if it isn't approved by a majority, then it's not passed. But I, I would say, then we need to see the opposite, and that is, show us examples of, of boards or other groups with authority where, where they, they require that there, that there be a, a majority. Well, I guess I should say, where they invalidate a vote. I mean, that's the point here, that we're saying that it would be invalidating a vote of a, of a border commission. I think that's why the courts haven't, haven't upheld those, those appeals of those tie decisions, is because they would then, just a tie decision invalidates a vote. That's, I don't think that, like I said, I've never seen that. And I would, maybe we could ask Johan about his experience, but I've never seen it. None of us are, except for Johan, are actually trained attorneys. I think what we need to do is get our attorney involved and have him say, "Oh yeah, here's some examples of where we do not or ignore the, the, the vote of a group that's tied, because there's an even number of people and there's half vote one way and half vote another way." So I, I would, I, I would feel very strongly that we cannot do that. I don't, I'm not even sure that it could get past city council, and I don't think it should. I would even argue to the end that that's just not, that's not correct. There's, like I said, I understand that there's been some, some, some sentiment on this, on this planning commission and Board of Adjustments, that a tie vote represents a no vote, but I want someone to show me in the law where that's the case.
I'd be happy to do that. It's in the Charter, Article 9.1, and it's in the the other, other policy document, what am I drawing a blank on? Municipal Code in Article 2, but we can do that offline if you want to, Dale.
No, I think that's something that would have to be a part of our discussion as a, in a public hearing when we discuss these, because it's, and in 9.1, what, what section?
Well, it comes down to, you know, how you would, would take the word decide. Under 9.1, this is E number one. There's, you know, here, is hereby established Board of Adjustments, which will have, well, this is Board of Adjustment, where is Planning Commission. The language is essentially the same. Well, I don't have Planning Commission in, in front of me. I was looking at Board of Adjustments lately. Does anybody have that handy?
Well, we're, we're looking at Board of, of Planning Commission rules.
Planning Commission, yeah, so I was looking, that reference I had was to Board of Adjustment, but it'll take me a while to find the one on Planning Commission, but it's also in the Charter, Article 2.
Well, I'm looking at Planning Commission, Article 9, Page 27 of the, of the Charter.
Yeah, that was, I was reading relative to Board of Adjustment, but you know, the part I was reading was E number one was here and decide. And then you, you talk about, then you go to the Municipal, Municipal Code is where it says that a decision requires a majority of the votes present. So the two work in concert, the bottom line being that a decision is required, and a decision is defined in Municipal Code as majority of the votes, voters present. That's where I'm coming from now. So it's the Municipal Code that would also have that.
I, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask for clarification on that. I don't, I'm not sure that that's what it says.
Well, and, you know, to kind of underscore it with recent experience, well, no, we're talking planning commission, so I won't get into that. But I think your, your, you know, proposal that we get some legal clarification on it is a good one. I think we should. You and I obviously disagree on this point, but other peoples have their hands raised, so let me go first to Rhonda. I think her hand's been up the longest.
Yeah, I think you covered some of what I wanted to state, is that that language about majority vote is, it's all over the code, the charter, it's on the application. It would just be creating a consistency and a clarification with the rest of the language. And I had looked that up at a previous meeting, when I thought the issue might come up. I don't have it in front of me either right now, but I think it would be valuable to, to have that specifically in front of us for discussion on this. And again, it would just, it would just create consistency with these other documents and clarification. So I would support that.
Thank you Rhonda, and I, I appreciate the comment about consistency. And after Kathy and Johan have had a chance to speak, and any others that want to, I, I may make a comment about style on the way that the city council did their policy and procedure that might help with, with Dale's concern. Anyway, let's continue. Are you complete there, Rhonda?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you Kathy.
So I wanted to, well, first of all, Chairman Heald, I found, and it's under 5.6 quorum. It says, "A concurring vote of a majority of those members present is required to approve any matter before the commission." And because of that, and because of the consistency, as Commissioner Peters was saying, it seems that that is the consistent position throughout. I'm, would be supportive of clarifying language. I'm wondering if the other thing we need clarifying language is the, is that a vote can only be taken once one way? Because one of the reasons what happened with White Fitz Farm is everybody agrees that, under Robert's Rules of Order, a tie vote denies the motion, which is what Chairman Miller was sort of saying. However, the problem was that the vote was taken twice in two different ways.
Right.
So which motion was it that was denied? And I've never seen that happen. I'd like to somebody to give me an example of where an elected body has done that before, because that was, you know, from somebody in the audience seemed like, you know, voting again for a predetermined outcome. So I don't know if we need language in here that says a vote can only be taken once in the affirmative, or something like that, and that would be something, I think, to ask one of our lawyers, unless somebody is familiar.
I would agree with that. I thought that was kind of a, an absurd request by, that was actually by the attorney for the homeowners association.
No, it wasn't.
Well, in any case, it was an absurd request, and, and he supported that idea. And I like the idea of, of a, what would essentially be what's consistent with other law, and that's that it's clear and understandable. And a, a reverse vote, as they asked for, was, was not, and people had to be explained to what it would mean and what would a vote mean to vote this way and that way. I'm absolutely in favor of that, of votes being always written, or of motions always being written in clear language. Plain English, we, they would be called. In fact, there's lots of plain English laws around that prohibit that sort of thing, and I think that, that's a great idea Kathy, I like that. We should have that kind of language that prohibits the sort of muddled language where people don't quite know what the question is, or what their answer would be if they're, you know, to be in favor or against, or whatever. Good suggestion.
And then back to what Commissioner Heald was saying, I'm just wondering if maybe the clarifying language belongs here in another section. And when I look at where it is under quorum, I'm not sure if it really belongs there under quorum either. Is that?
Well, I think if it's, if it's already in there, and, you know, I do think we need to, you know, follow up on Dale's request and get Mr. Cox's input on all this, but if, if it's in there under quorum, I agree that we could, you know, my point would simply be to have this section agree with that by essentially clarifying what a decision is. It's by majority vote. I don't think that changes the meaning of the section. It simply agrees with what the very definition is under quorum. And again, like I said, we need to get Mr. Cox's input on that, but that's, that's really kind of where I was going from, just try to add some clarity to what a decision requires. So, next step, I guess Paul's going to take that up with Tim, and we'll go from there.
Great.
Any other comments Dale?
I was going to, I just add that I, I think that a, in a, approving anything, you know, whether it's a law or whatever, that approval means that there's, there's a majority, and it doesn't require that there be an odd number of people. And so if it's a, if whoever is presenting a case can't convince a majority, whatever the, the number of people in the, the body is, then it doesn't pass. I think that's why the, the rule, the rules have been that way, and so I, I'm, I can say, I think we really need to have Tim weigh in on this. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Johan, you have a hand up?
Yes, thank you. I, I, you know, I, I haven't, I may have missed something in the, in the dialogue here, and I don't want to repeat anything, because I think Mrs. Kettner also already referred to this, but Chapter 2.16 of the City Code for the Board, actually is for the Board of Adjustment, but then 2.16010 refers to the Planning Commission. And it says, and F, Paragraph F tells us a quorum shall consist of five of the seven members of the Planning Commission. An affirmative vote of a majority of those members of the Planning Commission present shall be necessary to pass any item at a Planning Commission meeting. And, you know, that city ordinance were bound by that. And I think we may have covered that point. I I apologize that we have. The Board of Adjustment section, though, of that part of the code does not have the same language.
Right.
So, you know, I'll point that out, even though we're not in the Board of Adjustment yet.
Well, I would say, thank you, Johan. You found the reference that I couldn't locate.
Yeah, but it's it's 2.16.010, paragraph F. So if you want to, if you can turn pages fast enough to find it.
Okay, I've I've written it down. Very good. Are you complete, Johan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Paul, you have a hand up?
And I'm I'm leaning one way or the the other here. I'm I'm just kind of want to make a note of how staff would kind of, so if if a majority vote is required, right? So you have to have one more than 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 what doesn't vote for it. If we were to get, so so one of the things Aaron does is he pulls the commission to make sure everybody's available for meetings. And if we were to get only six of you available, we probably wouldn't hold the meeting that date. Because there's the potential for a tie. Also, we would probably counsel applicants. So let's let's say we actually get all seven of you together for a meeting date. And and somebody had to call in at the last minute, the applicant can request that the project be continued till you have a four, a full body before presenting the request, because they 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 there's always the opportunity for a tie. It may not happen that way. You know, they can end up 4-2, could end up 6-0, 5-1, however that works. But they would have the opportunity to continue their case until they had a full, a full board, whether that be Board of Adjustment or Planning Commission. So that would, that's always open to the applicant. And then we will be a little more cautious in scheduling meetings when we're know, we have commissioners, when it's a a formal action, a study session is for discussion purposes. But when there is a case that's going to require a decision by the commission, we need to make sure that we can do that. I I wouldn't necessarily go with six, but I could go with five, because I'm gonna get a, you know, with a vote that gets an outcome one way or the other. If we have a body where there's an even number and that opportunity, it it just kind of confuses things a little bit as well. So I'm just telling you some observations from kind of a staff management standpoint.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Alex?
Yeah, I guess just to follow up on that, I guess I'd like to add maybe to the table of things to consider would be adding language that would state then the case of a tie, a motion would fail. And if that needs more discussion or input from Mr. Cox or from the rest of you all, I think from a practical standpoint, it makes sense to maybe clarify that point in the rules as opposed to requiring a majority. I think, as Dale mentioned, it happens. In the past, we've had tie votes, motions have failed. I don't know. And I I guess just to go further down the rabbit hole, I don't know if we need to discuss certain topics that might require super majorities. That hasn't been discussed yet. But, you know, there are things out there and other bodies that require more than a majority vote. So I guess we could talk about this all night. I'm open to whatever. But I do agree that it would be good to have Mr. Cox's opinion and probably pick up on it another time.
Okay, yeah, very great. Good, thank you, Alex. Johan?
Thank you. You were, just to touch on the super majority requirement, you know, there are a few such places in Roberts Rules. But there is a Chapter 2.01 Boards and Commissions and Committees. And in two, this is again in our municipal code, 2.01.010 Executive Session Authority. All duly authorized Board, Commissioner, or Committee of the City of Lakewood by a two-thirds vote of members present may be recessed or may schedule an executive session, which shall be close to the public. Now, we've already been briefed on that by Attorney Tuthill because he told us that before we could do that. But that's something to keep in mind on that particular issue. There are only, there aren't a lot of other places where we, a majority, super majority is required. So I just wanted to mention that in passing.
Thank you, Johan. You know, a couple of comments that I'd like to to make as I lower my own hand here. You know, while Paul, with regard to your comment about staff's, you know, general approach toward a meeting if we only have six confirmed, I certainly understand why you you feel it's appropriate to to get seven. But at the same time, I think as long as we have a quorum of five members, we should be conducting business. And as far as a tie vote goes, I think, you know, if if we honor what it says in in the section, you know, on quorum, where it requires a majority vote of those present, then a tie vote in a case of only six members doesn't render a decision. If you honor, and also I would, I would add that you could have seven members present and one member abstain. And then you still got six members voting. So I think, I think we need to forge ahead with a meeting if we have a quorum.
And I would ask that you modify the language for the quorum to say that a quorum is an odd number of members above five.
Above five.
Right. So you could go with five or seven, but if you had six members present, you 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 shouldn't hold business. If you're going to require in your, if if you're going to require a majority vote, then that eliminates the opportunity for a tie. And and you're right, there's always the potential for somebody abstaining, but there's still the same thing if there's five present or seven present. You could still end up with that situation. I am just telling you how staff would look at managing this and calendaring items if it requires an odd vote in the affirmative to pass something. That was that was my point.
Okay, well, I appreciate your perspective on that.
Alan, may I just comment on that?
Oh, certainly, Dale. Yeah, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
In in general, in I've been on the commission for seven years. And I believe that three of the years, we have only had six members in total. We had a chairperson who was ill and so was not removed from the Planning Commission. She and and it was a pretty long time. I don't, I don't actually remember the numbers, but it was a long time that she was gone. There was Henry Hollander left the commission and we were at an odd, an even number then. I mean, it happens. It happens that people get sick. Through my seven years, there have been six people present, numerous, numerous meetings. I think that Johan and Alex may recall this as well. And it really has not been a problem. I think that's what what has been said before too. And the idea that we wouldn't be able to conduct business by our own rules if we have to have something other than an even number would essentially be asking someone to stay home on a day. Or to abstain or whatever. I think that would just be, again, I think that these rules would become absurd. And I, you know, there is a, there is a governing book, and that's Roberts Rules, and it clearly says, you know, how how we should, how we should do this. I just think we don't want to become so specific or try to be so specific that we wind up messing it up. I think I don't think that would be. We would become dysfunctional as a body then. I mean, it will happen. It's going to happen in the future that somebody's going to be sick and there's going to be another tie vote and and what the the idea that someone is sick at the last minute and everyone shows up at a meeting, but we say, oh, we have a rule that says we can't have a vote if there's an even number of people. I think that everyone would be upset about that. That's, and and I think it would make us look a little bit silly, because in all the years of this, this is the, that Board of Adjustment question is the only one that's been, or that Court of Adjustment Decision is the only one that's been questioned. There's, and as I said, for in my own experience, many, many meetings only had six people. What I, does that mean that we wouldn't have been able to have those meetings? Like I said, this is, we need to have Tim. I think we should probably stop the discussion on this because we need to have Tim weigh in. I'm pretty sure it's it's not as complicated as all that. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much, Dale. So, you know, in in light of your last suggestion, I'm gonna move on within that 3.8, the last sentence. I kind of have a question I would like to bring up, just for discussion to see if anybody has some ideas here. I mean, I like the way it says that when any appeal is filed, the appellant or and or applicant, if applicable, shall file all information to be presented to the commission no later than three weeks prior to the scheduled date of the appeal hearing. So my first question for Mr. Rice is, is that realistic? Has that been the practice? Three weeks seems like a long time.
You you think two, three weeks is too long?
Well, no, I'm just, I just think it's awesome. If you guys are seeing compliance with data being provided to your body three weeks out, that's awesome, because people need time to to process it and all that. That's my question. Has that been the practice?
That's, that's what we typically do. If there's a decision and they want to challenge the director's decision, we give them three weeks to to move forward with that. And that's fairly consistent with some of the code enforcement citations and so forth. I'm not sure I can give you a concrete answer at this time where that three weeks came from. It's it's fairly consistent in other jurisdictions as well. If you, one of the things, if if they're going, if the director is going to deny one of the items that we had talked about, expanding that list to include the the waivers and the signed plans and so forth, they're going to know from staff that what they are asking the director to approve, the director's probably not going to approve. And they're going to know this for several months in advance of when the director actually denies them. So I think three weeks is is suitable. It gives them a chance. It it's not a formal court case, right, where there certain standards and so forth. It's what they need to do is they need to get together a packet that staff and really where the pressure is, is push back on staff so that we can get you a decent staff report, one way or the other, in that amount of time. So if if staff can do it, I I would definitely say that the applicant or the appellant could do it as well.
Okay, well, thank you. That's very enlightening. And, you know, kind of where I'm going with this is we've already covered ground about, and you educated me on the fact that nothing in our rules and regulations can regulate what staff does. We don't control staff. Staff doesn't report to us. But I just wanted to get a sense if that was a realistic timeframe. And, you know, I don't know if it'd be appropriate, you know, me, I still kind of beat a dead horse at times, to put a statement in there that staff shall endeavor to provide all materials in a timely fashion to the board. If you think that's inappropriate, I understand. But I still would like to see something along that line.
And we can add, we can add that language. It softens it a little bit. I'm okay with having a having a deadline. And the reason I say that is you have a deadline, there's a date. They have a, they they know when things are due. Staff knows when things are due. There's no negotiation point. If it's a date plus or minus, the typically applicants will always push that threshold. Oh, is it four weeks? Is it five weeks? Is it six weeks? So when when does it go beyond the the three week deadline? Yeah, I I mean, we we could lighten it up if if you're comfortable with that. I'm I'm fine with a hard date.
Well, I like a hard date, but I don't want to be unrealistic. So if you feel that it's okay, that's, that's good. I would just like to have a some some language in there that, you know, contemplates a handoff timeframe to the Planning Commission, which helps us do our job. You know, the last thing we want to see happen is we get a lot of information on a very, very short time interval, and we simply don't have time to process it. You know, everybody's made time and their schedules are prepared for a meeting. And the last thing we want to do is not have that meeting, you know, move to postpone it or whatever might happen. And that's what I'm trying to prevent, you know, is getting in a situation like that where somebody feels we need to do that. So.
You you know what, Commissioner Hield, I, let me, let me work on this. Because the way I'm I'm seeing is it is the applicant has to have the information three weeks prior to the hearing before Planning Commission.
Right.
Which is fine. So they're actually going to submit it ahead of time. I want to make sure that with with the requirements that we're using on Lakewood Speaks, let me just make sure that that meets that timeframe. I think you're with with when it's going up and and when it's getting to the hearing date, I think three weeks is is enough. But I'll verify that for you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Any other questions on 3.8?
Kathy has your hand up?
Yes, Kathy has a hand up. Thank you, Kathy. Please go ahead.
I don't know if it really belongs here, but it goes along with your discussion of the timeframe. I had written down, I was wondering if there's some place that we can talk about kind of transparency. And, you know, we have this three week, you know, to the commission no later than three weeks prior to this scheduled date of the appeal hearing. Can we write something like there and immediately it'll be put online? I noticed the county and other municipalities put all of their, you know, immediately when things are filed for cases, they go up online. And I'm wondering if there's some place that we could start doing that.
Help me understand your your question a little more. So are you saying when a case is, a case that goes to the Planning Commission is filed with city staff, it's posted to, say, the city website that it's an upcoming case, even though, even though we don't have a hearing date yet?
Correct. Yes, exactly. So, you know, it's just really transparent. It's, I think it's in the long run would save a lot of time. I'd be happy to sometime, you like to share the screen. And I'm sure, Mr. Rice, you're probably familiar with what the county does. And that's, you know, within a couple of days of even just a community letter being submitted, it's a part of the case file that's online.
So the case is put on, I think, the same week that it comes in. Aaron, will you help me here? So when we, when we receive a case, we log it into our software management system. It's called Mark. And I believe Aaron inputs those on a Thursday, typically on a Thursday. There's a couple tweaks, some of them we can enter Monday or Tuesday. But I think everything goes in on Thursday, and then it's the city website, it's posted, right? So the the cases are all pushed. the city website, it it's posted, right? So the the cases are all pushed out and then it's updated on the the case system on a weekly basis. Are you referring to that? Or are you talking about?
I'm referring to all of the documents, all that, all that we do. And in fact, it's kind of gotten less transparent. We seem to have changed systems. And like, for example, with rezonings, you used to be able to find out that it was rezoning from a certain zone district to a certain zone district. Now it just says rezoning. And with the county, not only does it say rezoning, but you click on that and then you get all these folders. I pulled one up to talk of online submitted, application documents, community notification, review process, agency comments, correspondence to and from the applicant and citizens, just anytime anything is submitted on the case, it's immediately put online on the file. And I don't think we have anything like that.
And you're right, we don't. So let me, let me, let me step back and then also talk forward a little bit. So there there is a weekly case list, so you can check that on a weekly basis and see any new cases that have come into the city. Typically, you get the case number, a brief description of of what it is, and then the planner for the case, and then you can reach out to the planner to get additional information. Can you access the actual documents that are associated with the case? You cannot. It's also the the geo coding is, you know, pretty limited to the to the software that we have. That's what we have and and that's what we have to work with now. To get something what you're asking for would take some cooperation with IT, the city manager's office and so forth. We we don't have the program to do it. We are in the process of updating the permitting software as a whole for the city of Lakewood. Luckily for the planning department, there's also a planning module that accompanies this new permitting software. And that's one of the things we're asking for. We're looking at geo coding and essentially doing what you're asking for, what the county does. When we log in a case, the materials are there. And people can can go online and and look them up. That Commissioner Kettner may not go live until first quarter of 2021. And I I can't, that's that's my ultimate goal. I would love to do that. It's going to take some communication and coordination with some other departments as well, public works, IT, what we can and can't put out online. There's some sensitivity to providing peoples, not peoples, individuals, but corporations, their contact information and so forth. So I I am working towards that and I'll give you an update later next year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paul. And Kathy, you complete? Looks like you are. Dale, you have a hand up?
I did. I just was going to make a comment about 3.8. I, in that last sentence, I might be reading it differently than other people do, but I, what to me, it says is that the appellant or applicant shall file all information to be presented to the commission no later than three weeks prior. I think that the question is, what does it mean to file it? I I'm assuming that to file it means to give it to the planning department and not to the planning commission. So I don't think it's saying that we have to have it three weeks early. I think it's saying that it has to be at the planning department three weeks early.
And so Dale, if I can jump in here, I I agree. It wasn't my contention that we should have it three weeks early. I want to just clarify with Paul, if if in reality, the planning department having it that early is is something that we can pretty much count on. And then key off of it in terms of getting data in some realistic timeframe, that's kind of where I'm where I'm headed.
And I'm tracking both ways there. So it comes into the department and then we make sure you get it three weeks prior to the hearing.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you for following it both ways. I appreciate that. Are you complete, Dale? All right, good. I wanted to add one sort of comment about format that crossed my mind earlier on in this discussion. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at the city council's policy and procedures that I sent a link to a long time ago. But if you haven't, you might want to take a look at that and look at the format. I would also suggest looking at the content, but one of the things about the format that really I like, and I don't think we should copy it per se, I think we could essentially do the same thing in the format of the document we have. But the bottom line is it it states the policy, it gives authority for that policy briefly. And I think that is is a way to add some clarity. So if we're stating a policy and there's a specific authority for it, maybe we just put a line of reference in there. So my my point is, you know, if you haven't looked at city council policy and procedure, please do that. And if you have looked at it, I'd love to know your thoughts on on that kind of a process where it specifies authority. That's all I had. Any other comments before we move on? So I think we've we've pretty thoroughly covered 3.8, right? So in that regard, 3.9, Teresa, did you have a a comment in a previous meeting about 3.9? I had a a note that you did, but I'm not sure what it might have been.
I'm not sure that I ever stated it. I think we because I, in my spreadsheet, I've got a line that says we left off. So I'm not sure I did it. My question was, um, should this section include language that includes the planning commission reviewing planning staff's opinions on ODPs before any opinions are offered? So sending this out from modifying to just, you know, so that we can prevent maybe some things that have happened in the past.
Anybody have any thoughts? Dale, is your hand still up on the last one or is that on this one?
Okay, let me, let me clarify. I think that we should add language. That says that says that we should weigh in on on opinions about ODPs. And I would, I would broaden that up to anything because there's still a, I don't know, there's, there's a, there's some they're an odd beast. Let's just put it that way. And so I think that it behooves us to take a look at all things related to that.
Well, I agree with that. And I kind of, if I can interject here, I don't see any other hands. My thought on that was there, the way it's currently worded, it says, we shall review proposed modification, but there's no real action stipulated that what the commission may do. And so my thought was maybe we shall and shall review and approve or propose modifications to suggested amendments to an ODP. That seems to imply that our role is bigger than just reviewing it, that we would render some sort of a decision as to we agree with the changes or we agree with the changes with these modifications, or we don't agree with the changes. What do people think about that? Does that seem to go where you're headed, Teresa?
I think it's like, you know, like perpendicular.
Yeah.
Because I think I want to broaden it out to not just modifications, but to if there's, if there's going to be an opinion or a ruling or anything like that, I I think we need to take a look at. And I think that's, to give you context, I think we need to take a look at these ODPs. Figure out how do they function? You know, what what do they supersede or not supersede? And let's clarify that for these people that are holding these contracts because some there's some that just there, we need clarification.
Okay, I I think that's a good point. It doesn't need clarification. Alex, you have a hand up?
Just a question for Paul. How often do these proposed modifications to ODPs come up?
Not, not, not very often. The one I'm most familiar with, so Belmar, the Villa Italia ODP modification number three, that was the original ODP that created Belmar. Within that ODP, they actually had a process to modify the ODP administratively. So the planning director, at that time, it was Frank Gray and then Becky Clark could approve an administrative modification to the ODP, provided they followed the ODP modification within, that was specified in the the official development plan. And Belmar did that. They had four, five and six for modification. So there were three over the course of about 15 years. One of them, it it changed the width of a right away by a couple of feet. One of them changed tree spacing along a right away. I can't, I always forget one. And then there's an ODP modification number seven. Number seven was such that it came back to the planning commission and city council. They modified both commercial and residential densities. And I I won't get into the whole history on it, but that one actually went through the full public hearing process. So Belmar's a little more specific. So the we we don't get a lot of ODP modifications. And if we do, if there's not a specific process that differentiates between administrative and and those that the public goes back through the public process, it comes to the planning commission. So I don't know how many we're going to see. And when we do, there essentially going to be a rezoning case before the planning commission.
So one clarifying point in the language here might be that the planning commission shall review proposed modifications that were administratively or are administratively modified. Is that, did I understand that right? Because if not, if there's not an administrative process in place for that, ODP would come before the commission anyway.
It would. The other thing, I I think I heard Commissioner Stone say, and and she can correct me, with with regards to White Fence Farm, it was a director interpretation, which is a separate section provision of the zoning ordinance. And essentially, not setting myself up here to be corrected multiple times because I'm not completely fluent on what actually is going on with White Fence Farm. But I I believe Travis made some interpretations that were appealed. His interpretation was appealed by the neighborhood group. And so that's kind of what was brought before the Board of Adjustment sometime back. And so I'm not, and I'm, I've I've heard what you said, Commissioner Stone. I'm trying to wrap my head around that because the director does have authority to make interpretations based on provisions in the zoning ordinance. And my understanding was, it was they they pick, the the applicant had the choice. When we went through and legislative rezoning in in 2012, ODPs all got a base zone district, correct? So there's, if if there's something that isn't in that ODP, they go back to the base zone district for guidance. And 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 I think I'm I'm trying to figure out how the planning commission would get a director's interpretation when the zoning ordinance provides for it. And I haven't quite wrapped my head around that yet. But I I do understand that if there is a modification and it's not specified in the ODP, it comes to the planning commission. If there is a process specified in the ODP that says you go through these steps to do it, that's the, that's the way it it's approved or modified. So I think there's two things I'm I'm trying to rectify here.
So if the if the planning director issues an opinion or a, I can't remember your word. Sorry. Some part of an ODP and whether it applies or doesn't apply to a certain piece of property, in effect, it negates that ODP or that part of the ODP which results in a de facto modification. So I, that's why I, one of the many reasons I think that those opinions should be run by us and that we as a body need to tackle this beast that is the remaining ODPs and the value, I think there's value in them. I think we need to figure out what they are and how we interact with them just long term.
Right.
Okay, very good. Kathy, I believe you had a hand up and then Dale. Kathy, go ahead.
So I also noticed, I think, what Commissioner Hill said about in this section 3.9 with the ODP modification, it says we review them and doesn't say what happens after that. And because it's usually a rezoning, I would suggest that we add language that says we make a recommendation to, you know, the same language that we use under rezoning, that we make a recommendation to council for approval, approval with, I I can't find the language now, but do you know, Mr. Rice, the language I'm talking about?
I I do. And and as I'm sitting here and kind of listening and and looking, I may, so I'm I'm going to make a suggestion as well. I think that ODP modifications, section 39, should either become section 36 so that it follows right after rezonings, or it becomes a subsection of 3.5. And so we talk specifically about rezonings and ODP modifications in the in the same section. I I'm still thinking about that, but as I listen to discussion more and more, I think bringing them closer together in the document and sharing some of the same language will be helpful.
I would agree with that. I also had, I'm really supportive of Commissioner Stone's idea, but I had the same thing going through my head as Mr. Rice, as far as how that works with the language in the zoning ordinance. And but I don't think it's beyond this body to make a recommendation to city council for some changes. In fact, I think that is something that we do. And I think that that is one of the conflicting languages that we need to get rid of. You know, we've been told that overlays mean, you know, take precedent. And if we've got under, so maybe we need some, a suggestion for clarification for council for that. And then another thing that I think has gotten us a bit into this situation that we do differently from other communities, and I know it's already after 10 o'clock, so tonight's probably not the night to talk about it, but maybe Mr. Rice sometime. Or maybe we could have somebody from another community tell us that most communities, major site plans get approved by either a city council or a planning commission. And I think that that would, that process would probably go a long way for us. So maybe a recommendation to council of changing our will rules so that we have some kind of oversight at that level. So just some food for thought, I think.
You complete, Kathy. Dale, before we go to you, I want to point out kind of key off of what Kathy said, it's getting late. I'd like to make a recommendation that we we cut this off and try to wrap up at 10:30. And in that wrap up, we set a date for our next meeting. So Dale, with your comments, we'll go forward, but after that, we may not have time to start another section. But I want to plant the seed that, yeah, I think it's time to come to a stopping point. Go ahead, Dale.
That's quite all right. In fact, you stole my thunder. Why would, I was seconding Kathy's not quite emotion that we note the time I was going to suggest we just finish because I mean, I have to, I have an early class tomorrow. I think other people have to be at work too. And and we are already planning to meet again on the date in November as well. So I I I think that these go pretty slow, but we still have four pages left and I'd be in favor of once we stop talking about 3.9 that we that we continue to next meeting.
Okay, I'm I'm in favor of that certainly. So with that, Okay, I'm, I'm in favor of that certainly. So with that being said, are there any other comments on 3.9? Okay, seeing no hands, then we will conclude our work on 3.9. And that gives us a little time to go ahead and, and I'd, I'd like to ask the question if people feel like having these two meetings on the same night is productive. You know, we never know what's coming in the Board of Adjustment evening. It could be an hour, it could be three. And I guess in that event, we could do what we've done before. If, if Board of Adjustment goes long and we can reschedule this working session, the study session. So my question to everybody is, are you okay with scheduling the fourth with two meetings as we did tonight? Just a show of hands if you're all right with it.
I'm, I'm good with it. The, the caveat I have is I, I feel a little bit guilty stringing Paul and Aaron along, waiting for us to wrap up with our Board of Adjustments meeting. So having said that, I just wanted to throw that out there for us to kind of contemplate how we want to proceed. But otherwise, I'm comfortable doing both of them in one night.
Okay, well, that is a very good point. So Paul and Aaron, please weigh in here and let us know if you're okay with it.
You know, these guys are troopers. I'm sorry, I'm interrupting. They're troopers. And I gotta say, whatever we want to, you know, that they're going to do whatever we want to do. But I, I, I'm with Alex. They're, you know, what are you guys doing for two hours when we're in executive session? So I, you know, there, I don't know how hard it is, Paul, for you all. One night versus two nights, but be, just be honest.
So Aaron's relatively new, and he knew when he started, one of the things was he wasn't going to have many Wednesday nights free. And it's kind of, in my experience, feast or famine, we'll have a lot of Wednesdays in a row, then we'll have a couple of months where we get a break and then, you know, it goes back. So I, I think both Aaron and I, especially when we started talking about updating the policies and procedures, that we're going to be at this for a while. So we've, we've kept our calendars clean. And, and it worked. So we're ready. As I looked at the calendar, nothing, nothing along with November 4th. Elections are sometime around there. It's the only thing that I would throw out at you. I don't know what the actual day that is.
The third, I guess.
So if, if we were having a public hearing, I would probably hesitate scheduling the public hearing on that day. I'd push them, try and get them in earlier or later, but since it's a study session, if all of you are comfortable with the fourth, Aaron and I will be available for the fourth as well.
I'm fine with the fourth. I did want to ask, I thought I saw online that we have something scheduled now on October 21st.
Aaron?
So I, I did, if, if we move into the item of general business, I did want to follow up with the commission regarding upcoming agenda items. There were several emails sent out regarding calendars, potential upcoming meetings. And then Commissioner Kettner and I had discussed several things that we wanted to bring up during general business. If you'd like to discuss that now, I'm more than welcome to discuss upcoming dates and the calendar.
Okay, well, I think we're settled on November 4th for a continuation of the study session. So let's do that. Let's move into general business and start with, with you, Aaron.
Okay, I, I had told the, the commission regarding potential upcoming dates for October 21st as well as November 4th and November 18th. It, it does appear that based on the timeline of ordinances and, and getting things through City Council as well, in a timely fashion, they deal with the budget. That i- i- if we have a quorum for those meetings, that we will be moving forward with the meeting on, again, October 21st. And November 4th is discussed today, and then November 18th as well.
Right. And just to reiterate, I think I only responded to Aaron, but I'm unavailable on November 18th. The other two dates discussed work for me.
Okay, any other questions or, or input from anybody on on the 21st? Okay, with regard to scheduling, you know, we, in my short experience on the commission, we had a, a planning meeting, Planning Retreat, it was called, in September last year. And I know it's not a normal year and certainly things like that get bumped when things are as crazy as they are and staff is shorthanded and all the things that, that Planning Department is facing. So I wanted to kind of ask Paul and Aaron about scheduling what I would call more of a planning session than a planning retreat. I think it's important that we have an annual discussion about topics, which I think is also part of our rules and regulations, is to talk about that and define those. So Paul, do you have any thoughts about working that into the schedule this fall sometime? Just maybe something like we did in the past in terms of blocking out a Friday morning, but having it all be virtual and really trying to maybe set the agenda based on communication, on input from the commission. It's like, what does the commission want to discuss? And then of course, discuss that with staff in terms of what does staff want to discuss? And then from that, we can create a program. What do you think?
I think, I think it's doable. And, and the I, I don't see a lot of difference doing something virtually other than what we've done in the past when we've all got together as a, as a group and, and had the discussion. My concern would be that maybe breaking it up into a couple sessions, I, I'm not sure that I would want to sit here for four and a half hours and talk with, and it is, it's, it's a, it's a really different environment, sitting in front of a screen and, and not being able to, to get up and, and move around. And I don't think, when we, when we did it as a group, we were, you know, fairly informal. People could get up and stretch and move around. Whereas here, you're kind of tied to one spot. So my only hesitation or, or thinking was that if we come up with a topic list, we may have like a mini series where we do these hour and a half, two hours, and we do three or four of them instead of trying to do one long one. So let me, Jonathan Wachtel has actually put together a program for his Sustainable Neighborhoods where he, he's done some kind of educational program. I, let me, let me get with him and see what he did timeframe wise and, and setup. And then what we could do is email you topics for discussion, and then we can put together an agenda, kind of go around and, and finalize an agenda with the, the commission, and then establish some dates. And again, if we can look at availability, where we could do Friday, we could do, we have a lot of flexibility. We could do long lunches. We could pick a day of the week. We could still do things after hours. And it didn't have to be a Monday or Wednesday. So there, there are a lot of options to us depending on how we, how we want to move forward. And I will give you some options on successful ways that some of these things have moved forward. So I'll come back to you with that information as well.
I think that sounds great. And I, I especially appreciate the idea of breaking it up. Because I think it's valuable time, you know, time well spent and, and exploring, you know, ideas and having some more in-depth discussion, but I also understand it's no fun to do that for hour after hour on the computer. So thank you for your, your thought process on that. I look forward to seeing your suggestions and having suggestions from the commissioners. So that sounds great. We'll look forward to an update on it. I didn't want to let it totally get out of, out of view in the rearview mirror since it came and went as far as the traditional date went. So thank you for already having a thought process going.
Thank you.
All right. Any other input on that? Okay, seeing none. Any other general business items? Aaron, yes.
Pardon the technical difficulties. One thing that we had discussed, and this was discussed somewhat before my, my time, I believe, was just email communications. And I've had some conversations with IT about utilizing personal emails. And staff has discussed again how to make that transition easiest for the commission. I know in the past, a lot of communication has happened via personal email. But in order to protect your privacy, the, the IT security policy is really pushing us to enforce commissioners using their city of liquid email address for official city business. And we haven't set a date, although we've talked about it. And so staff has discussed with the commission, okay, of setting the date of January 1st, 2021 is the, the date at which we'll transfer all official communication for city business to the commission solely through your commissioner emails as opposed to using your personal emails as well.
I think that's great. I, I know that several of us have had issues with getting our city email up and running, but I appreciate the focus on it. And I think it's totally appropriate to doing all of our business and conversations via city email. So thank you for that.
And certainly if you have any IT questions or difficulties with your emails, I, I'm not necessarily the best person to help you, but I'll get you in contact with our IT department who is much more, or much better equipped to answer some of your questions than hopefully get all of the commissioners squared away.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you. Any other items? Well, I think, I think we're going to make it by 10:30. Then I would go ahead and say that having set our next meeting and cover general business, that I will adjourn this study session at 10:24 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Jonathan, wherever you are.